I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're really happy that you're all here with us this evening. Jamie, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaum.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
And Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on April 15th, 2019, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Jamie, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, we do. A listing of budget transfers was received from Finance Director Brian Bouchong and distributed to you prior to the meeting for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And that's all the correspondence we have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Mayor Edwards, I believe we have a special recognition this evening.
We do indeed, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. This is one of these recognitions, act of recognition, that we always look forward to every year, and it involves our Bicycle Safety Commission. They're a hard-working group. They meet over here usually about 5:00 o'clock, or is that right, Steve? 6:00? But you're always, you're so regular, you're dedicated, and you've moved mountains, too. You've done so much good work, and we're very, very grateful for all of the good work of the Bicycle Safety Commission. So I'm going to do actually three things here tonight, if I may. First, we have a proclamation declaring the month of May 2019 as National Bicycling Month, and one specific day has been designated as Bike-to-Work Day throughout the United States by national state and local bicycling organizations, as well as by state and local I hesitate to read all this, but some of it's familiar, and it is important. Where thousands of Ohioans and Bowling Green residents rode a bicycle at least once in 2018, and whereas bicycling is a safe and efficient activity that can be used for recreation, fitness, commuting, shopping, errands, in lieu of operating a motor vehicle thereby preserving natural resources, reducing air pollution, and getting healthful exercise. And whereas it is consistent with the city's high level of environmental consciousness and concern to support and encourage the citizens of Bowling Green to consider incorporating bicycling into their lifestyles and daily activities whenever possible. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as National Bicycling Month in this municipality and encourage all residents to consider bicycling as a fitness and recreation activity, and especially as an alternative, alternate means of transportation that saves energy and reduces pollution and traffic congestion. So with that, I'm going to call the Chair of the Bicycle Safety Commission forward, Dr. Steve Langendorfer. And Steve, it's my pleasure to present this to you here on behalf of the Bicycle Safety Commission. And I wonder, Steve, if I may, and I won't press you to ask, remember all the names, but I got the list here of the members of the Bicycle Safety Commission. Many are here.
We have plenty of them here tonight, yes.
Yeah, but whether they're here or not, they're going to be recognized. They deserve it. Bicycle Safety Commission, these are the members. First representing the Bowling Green Junior High is Reagan Ottley. Please stand now when I call your name, if you're here. Eileen Baker. Eileen, yes, thank you, Eileen. Madison Stumpf, I know Matty's here. Bob Rex, right here. Greg Dickerson is not here. Kristin Ottley is here, and Steve Langendorfer, our Chair, Tyson Richmond of our Police Division, and Karika Buckz, representing Bowling Green High School. She has a conflict tonight. So thank you all very, very much for your service. And we have one other very special thing tonight, Steve, and that's the identification, the naming of the person who is the Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year. Would you care to do the honors?
I would very much like to. Those of you who are unfamiliar with it, we have a plaque in the hallway around the corner, and each year we have the photograph of the honoree for that year who's out there. So we have it on the plaque. We also have a certificate. This year's certificate is sitting here in the front row. It's Mr. Alan Frishman. Alan, if you would step forward, I'd like to have you get this certificate. Alan came highly recommended by several nominations since the end of 2016. This gentleman has bicycled around the globe, an equivalent mileage, 25,000 miles. Some of you know I bike every day, but that's not even a tenth of what, or you know, 10 times what I've done. So we were like, Alan is, as you can imagine, a regular cyclist. I met him a few weeks ago. We were comparing notes. Since last October, he's done 10,000 miles during the winter on his fat tire bike, and he and I were racing side by side this morning in the swimming pool as well. So anyway, Alan's a member of the Toledo area bicyclists. He is a leader of many rides. I think he did, he told me something like 250 rides that he does every year, and he also, one of his nominators said, is very safety-conscious, always wears a helmet. We think he is an excellent representative for this year's Bike Spokesperson Award, pun intended, all right? And Alan, and we also have the plaque. This is Alan's very handsome picture that his wife approved. This will go on display in the hallway, if you'd like to say a word or so.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, where are you going, Alan? First thing I'd like to mention is that next Wednesday, I think, the May 15th, is the Ride of Silence, starting at the City Park, 7:00. Slow roll, 8 miles, 12 miles an hour. Yeah, this is, this is quite an honor. I started cycling again in 2012. I started riding with TAB. I used to ride a little bit with the Black Swamp Cyclists, but they kind of disbanded. And it's a great group of people up there in Toledo. They have like 17 organized rides a week, if anybody's interested, different speeds, lot of camaraderie. I still have accidents. I put the bike on the pavement a couple of weeks ago, hit some loose gravel that nobody saw, and bought a new helmet, buy a new helmet. But yeah, it was, the funniest thing is, we put up the news, well, we, the city put up the signs, bikes may use full lane, and so there happens to be one right across the street from my house. My daughter brought it to my attention and said, "Look, Dad, they put it up just for you." So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you for being here. And I'm glad Alan mentioned one thing, and I just want to emphasize this. Next Wednesday at 7:00?
We're asking people to gather at 6:30.
At the City Park for the Ride in Silence.
By the pool, pool parking lot.
That's right.
Try to get started right at 7:00. It's in memory of all persons that have been injured or killed cycling. Kristin has a number of handouts for folks to pass around to make sure that people, we have, we've had at least 90 for the last two years.
Yeah. It's very, very impressive. I enjoyed being with you last year, and I'll be with you next Wednesday night.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Alan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Quite an inspiration. Jamie, do we have anyone registered for lobby visitation this evening?
Yes, we have three people this evening. We'll start with Matty Stumpf.
My name is Matty Stumpf, and I live at 724 North Enterprise Apartment 34. So I wanted to remind council and all of our guests tonight about a special event tomorrow at Grounds for Thought. From 4:00 to 7:30, there's a group of environmental studies students on campus, and we're hosting a reusable bag-making event at Grounds for Thought, that big table area in the middle. And we have some examples of some of the bags that we have made. Some of them are sewing machine bags that I have here, but we're going to primarily be doing these tie bags. They're super easy to make. They're great for people of all ages to come. They're also super heavy-duty, which is a little surprising, but because they're knotted, they actually get stronger over time, because the more weight you put in it, the more it pulls on those knots. So if you want to take a look at those, and we just wanted to invite everyone as a way to show the community that you don't need to purchase reusable bags to be bag-free. I'm sure lots of folks have t-shirts lying around that are sitting in a drawer somewhere, and this is a really easy way for you to convert those into something usable, as well as start to live a more sustainable life. So those are nice and fun. Keep passing them down, and I'll grab them at the end. And so we hope to see you all there. We're very excited. From 4:00 to 7:30 at Grounds for Thought tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Colleen Smith.
I am Colleen Smith, and I'm glad to be here this evening. I just wanted to come, I won't take much of your time, but I wanted to share an experience that I had with a couple of city employees about two weeks ago.
Ma'am, excuse me, just real quick, can I get you to say your name and address, please?
Colleen Smith, 1126 Clark Street, Bowling Green, Ohio.
Thank you.
You're welcome. About two weeks ago, I'm standing in my dining room, and I look out the window, and all of a sudden I see a water distribution truck pulled across my driveway. And I see two young fellows, and they had metal detectors, and they're going all over my driveway. And I thought, uh-oh. So I raised the garage door, and I went out, and I said, "Do I have a problem?" And the one looked at the other, and he said, "I think we have a problem." And I said, "Oh, what's the problem?" And he said, "We are not able to locate your meter for water shut-off, and we have to have it so that if you have a problem, we don't have to shut off the whole street until your water gets repaired." And I said, "Oh, okay." He said, "Do you know where it is?" And I said, "No, I don't. I know where the one is in the house, but I don't know where the one is outside." So he said, "Well, we think it might be under your driveway." And I thought, "Oh, so what happens if it's under my driveway?" And he said, "Well, we would have to cut the driveway and go down. We have to have it so that it's accessible in case there's a problem." I said, "Well, I guess we have to do what we have to do." But they were very courteous, and they were implying that it wasn't my problem, it was theirs. And so I went back in the house, and about maybe half an hour later, I looked out the window again, and I saw them digging about four to six inches on the east side of my driveway. And I thought, hallelujah. And sure enough, they found it. It had been there obviously a long time, because when they dug, dug it up, it totally disintegrated, and they had to replace it. But anyway, they left everything in top shape. When they left, they replaced it, they filled it in with dirt and with grass seed, and it just looks wonderful. And I thought, you know, they were so respectful and so courteous, and they were not wanting to tell me it was my problem, that it was their problem. And I just thought, city council needs to hear that city employees are doing their job. Thank you.
Colleen, thank you for sharing that. We do appreciate that. It's always good to hear good words.
And finally, Frances Brent.
And problems are kind of what I have in mind tonight, commending you for some of your problem-solving things. I wish to commend all of you, the administration, the employees, just as Colleen did, for some very creative, thoughtful, and judicious planning, purchasing, and actions regarding land owned by various government entities, whether the city, whether it's the school. There's been land exchanges that are benefiting the new senior center, the community park over here, the new community center has become a reality, because you listened to the citizens saying this would be a wonderful idea, and it's turning into reality. And I'm watching with great interest the way in which creative thinking is going on involving the new city building. We've been looking for a solution for decades, and maybe, again, with purchase of land, with the aging of the community center over here, we're going to have a solution that meets our criteria of having it sensible, well-paid, and well-located for us. Now, the concept of a community school has been controversial. It also is essential for our growth as a community. We need to make solutions of recognized problems a city-wide solution. By city-wide, I mean, all right, I want to take the parking, the traffic flow out at the educational center on Polo Row in Fairview. It has been named again and again, "Oh, we can't do it. Such a problem. Things are..." All right, I have heard presentations by the superintendent and others about, "Well, we can swap this land, we can swap that land, we can do this, we can do that." What I am urging you to do is say to yourselves, which I think you're already starting to do, we know we have a problem. We know we have done part of the solution, some of our thinking. Let's set up some kind of a committee that is going to be working to solve the problem in advance. It's a problem now, anyway. All right, what land's going to be swapped? Actually, I wrote some notes. We need working plans, we need legislative action, we need legal barriers removed, we need finances laid out and acted on, we need timelines to meet. We need proactive action that will convince the public that we have, we can actually educate our children in a sensible way, and give them the plants they need for the setting for our children, and the really wonderful, wonderful teachers that we have. So I thank you for being a thoughtful group. I am looking forward to see what all you come up with, and I think that every organization in the city, whether it's a book group, a quilter circle, a governmental study group, the university, all groups need to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. I do appreciate your comments. I would just kind of, you refer to these as problems. I prefer to actually look at them as opportunities. We look at, you know, this is a current conversation within our group, and we look forward to future conversations that will result in hopefully finding ways that we can support the mission of the schools. It's a high priority for city council and certainly city administration. So thank you. Is that it, Jamie? Very good. Thank you. Let's proceed on our agenda to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I have an ordinance from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green for property generally known as 525 Ridge Street from B1 Limited Commercial to R5 University-related residential zoning. This ordinance will also require a public hearing, and I believe the first available date would be July 17th?
I believe it's June 17th.
Oh, I'm sorry, June 17th, after it gets this passed to 30 days?
Mm-hmm.
And, or is, but is that, well, if we do it at 6:45, it shouldn't interfere with any other committee.
I agree.
Okay. So we tentatively schedule that public hearing for June 17th at 6:45?
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
I have two ordinances from the committee of the whole and a utilities legislation. First, from the committee of the whole, an ordinance enacting and adopting the 2019 S11 Supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, and also an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and engineering services related to a city administration services building feasibility study. From the public utilities committee, an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system for roof replacement at the water and sewer facility.
Moving on to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. Just a couple of things. We all know that May is always a tremendously busy month in the city of Bowling Green, and we have so many activities going on. We identified the Ride in Silence that will take place next Wednesday night, and this Wednesday is, I'll just go through a couple of the other activities that are coming here to heighten your awareness and maybe your participation. We have the National Employee Health Day. It's going to take place from 11:00 to 1:00 in the City Park in cooperation with Parks and Recreation. And Mrs. Ottley might want to expand upon that a little bit, she's prone to do. And we have the start of the farmer's market this Wednesday, and that's always an exciting time to see that come around again. And Sandy, you and I will be participating in the 50th Nakuma Meeting at University House this Wednesday. It's really special with the Japanese-American community and so many of our Japanese businesses from throughout the region. We have Arbor Day this Thursday, a celebration at Connyatt School with the 5th graders there from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., and we'll be proclaiming Arbor Day in Bowling Green, and we'll be joined by members of the Tree Commission. And we could throw in Firefly Nights is coming up, what, in a week from this Friday night? Yeah, that would make it then, so, and that's an exciting time, too. So those are just some things you might keep in mind. I'm just probably hitting the surface of a number of these special events and activities. I would like to just also make you aware of a piece of legislation that's just been introduced in Columbus. There's some interesting things going on there, happening fast, and even though you pay attention to them, they have a way of, all of a sudden, you find out what's on a fast track. And so tomorrow, I will be, I've already had contact with our state representative's office, and, but I will be getting a letter to our state representative, Mr. Gamberi, who is a member of the House Energy and Natural Resources Committee, because there is a bill called House Bill 6. It's a nuclear subsidy bill. And this might sound at first blush something that's very positive, maybe something we could consider, so forth, who knows? But when you get into it, there's some aspects of this piece of legislation that could be very damaging to AMP Ohio and the Ohio Municipal Electrical Association, and all those communities that are involved with those two groups. And we've been hoping, as I said, this is on a fast track, that something would be introduced, an amendment, and we're, we'll be, that's what we'll be pushing, that would help to mitigate some of the bill's negative effects. In a sense, this bill, again, sounds at first blush kind of positive, possibly. But as a community like Bowling Green, we've, we have a long, rich history in sustainability. We keep referring to it all the time. All of us, and our citizens should all share in this pride. A lot of good things have happened over the years, and you've been a part of some of them in helping to make our solar field, we're now working on another solar field, and to, and we, of course, were the first with the wind turbines, and now the largest solar field, you know, anywhere in the state and so forth. But all these good things that are happening, that we've worked on, have been, we've benefited from different tax credits and so forth that have made renewable energy possible. And, and we would like the fact that Bowling Green can continue to qualify for resources under this bill to create Ohio Clean Air Program. It's O-C-A-P. You'll be hearing a lot about this, and some already. But in event, in point of fact, I should say, that this legislation, as is currently written, would eliminate the renewable portfolio standard and serve to devalue renewable energy credits for our renewable energy projects and our investment in clean energy projects. It's very disturbing, and we hope that some way, and I've been, we've been working with Brian O'Connell and our administrator, Lori Tredor, and I've met with Brian today. As I said, we'll be getting a letter off first thing in the morning, it's already been prepared, to Representative Gamberi, because we hope that we will be joining with lots of other communities and so forth that are committed to renewable energy and so forth, and say, "Look, this may sound good, it might save, you're trying to save the nuclear, some of the, you know, Davis-Bessei up here. I understand the people in Ottawa County, that means a great deal to them up there in the schools and so forth." But we hope that through consideration of this legislation, it's not going to shut the door on communities like Bowling Green to participate in continuing to receive these renewable credits. And so I just wanted to make you aware of House Bill 6, to track it, pay attention to it, and any suggestions you have for really highlighting public awareness, and especially awareness among legislators, feel free to reach out and/or make your suggestions and so forth. So I am concerned about it. I read a little bit in the newspapers, reference to it, but I really didn't know the full impact until today, when we got, Lori and I met with Brian O'Connell. And he's been hearing from his board, from AMP Ohio, and so we hope that, we know we can't get the legislation to run away, but we hope it can be amended, modified, so that at least the door is not shut on communities like Bowling Green and throughout the state of Ohio that have been trying to improve our environment and working very hard on renewable energy-type projects. So that's it, and I would appreciate it if you have any questions. But that concludes my report, Mr. President, members of council, and be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mayor Edwards.
Mr. Mayor, the letter you're going to send, your copies?
Absolutely no, they will be coming to you, yeah, I should, I thank you, I should have, as I do whenever I write. I try to cover you with them, make sure that you're aware of it as well. Feel free to reach out on your own, too.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tredor.
Good evening. President Osbacher had asked that I update you in follow-up to our last meeting, where we had several lobby visitations discussing activities that can be done as a community, and one of the items that we discussed at that meeting was enhancing current police training that is offered to local establishments. And to update you that the police have begun work on that process, they have already forged a partnership with our local Chamber of Commerce, and on June 26th, they will offer the first of those trainings in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't have a time yet on that, that's still be, to be determined, but they will have that information. They will then follow up with additional trainings in the fall. So we will bring you more information once those, the time of that June 26th meeting has been solidified. But again, just wanted to let you know meeting has been solidified. But again, just wanted to let you know that we have been working on that front as we promised. That's all I have this evening, subject to your questions.
Questions for Lori.
Is this training with regard to recognizing trouble situations and?
The training is for, for businesses. Of course, anybody would be welcome to attend. But yes, that, that is a part of the training. They have other aspects that they look at as well in the training.
Right.
But that will be a component of it.
So helping employees understand how to handle a situation?
Right, right. How to address people. And, and there are always reminders that, that we can issue about, you know, of course, how to cooperate well with police.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, if I could just pass on to you that I attended one of the people that were having meetings, ask what they could possibly do for, for this situation. And there is a lot of discussion about wanting input from professionals at the university, too, if that's at all possible, that the police could tap into. And, um, I just wanted to pass that along to you, too, that the citizens, people who are working with hate speech and, um, you know, have careers in it, would like to also be a part of it.
And, you know, Heather and I today spent some time with the folks at BG SU who run the Step Up/Step In program on campus. That is aimed, it is an intervention program. Um, it's pretty vast, but I think that that's a natural partner, whether that is best with this pairing. I mean, of course, they could reference that, or if there are other opportunities for the community to participate in that. We both thought that that was well worth our time to discuss that with them and learn about that initiative. And they're looking at, they've had a lot of success on campus with that program and are looking at community partners now. And it seemed like a very natural time for us to have those conversations. So I appreciate that you're a part of them as well. I know others are interested, and it seems that we're, you know, as always, working together, we can accomplish a lot more, right?
This is, yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I think these can work in harmony. I think they very, definitely can. Um, this is a good time to bring up another employee who does an outstanding job. Here's Heather, who is very overworked with planning issues, but still taking care of the community and making sure we all get along. This is a welcoming community and a friendly committee, or, or community where people want to live. So thank you, Heather, for doing more and above and beyond the work you're required to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Lori, also, Chief Hetrick, thank you for your efforts and follow through on that. We appreciate that. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. Wanted to let you know, the public and council know that Historic Preservation Commission, we now have regular meetings set the first Friday of the month at 3:30. Special thanks to John, who attended the last meeting. The commission really appreciated that and hope you enjoyed listening to all their ideas. Quick snapshot on zoning permits. We're at 121 permits so far this year compared to 107 this time last year. Also, we received qualifications from six planning firms in regards to the zoning code and subdivision update, and we have a small committee reviewing those, and we will meet soon to go over those and let you know what we come up with. That's it, unless you have any questions. You know, I shouldn't say that. Not in our town. Thank you for attending the anniversary. I think that meant a lot to the people that were able to attend. And it was kind of neat to see all the, the timelines of each year of what's been accomplished. You kind of forget as you go along all the different events and activities. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by complimenting, um, one of our lobby visitation folks on their beautiful choice of attire this evening. Mrs. Brent is sporting a beautiful t-shirt there. And if anyone would like one, I'm sure we have a few left that we'd be happy to sell you. But, uh, yeah, that wasn't on my notes, so I'm going off-script here, uh, as I'm, as I'm apt to do, right, Mayor? So, uh, we mentioned, Steve mentioned, and all my bike safety commissioners conveniently laughed, except Maddie. She's still here. Thank you. So they did mention that this is Bike Month. Thank you for the proclamation. And our bicycle spokesperson recipient is, might be the most excited one we've ever given it to. He's very excited, um, which is great. We do have, uh, next week, three different events coming up, and we mentioned the Ride of Silence on Wednesday, and there's some flyers going around, so that's been mentioned. Prior to that, on Tuesday, we're going to be doing our Second Annual Educational Assembly for all, and this year it is all third graders in Bowling Green are invited. Last year, we started with the city schools. Obviously, they have the largest amount of third graders, and we were able to handle that. Uh, and so this year, we opened that up to all of the schools located in Bowling Green. So far, I know that Montessori is sending some students over. St. Alice cannot this year. They hope to next year. I'm not sure about Christian Academy, and, um, the Slick Academy does not currently have third graders, but next year they will. So, um, but that is next Tuesday in the morning. The mayor will be there. And, uh, every third grader will receive a bookmark and then one of the little blinky lights. And we have the Right Direction coming again, which I think you guys have seen, but, um, they jump around and do really cool things that I could only dream of. And, um, so their message of safety and wearing helmets and obeying traffic laws and things like that resonate a lot more with third graders than Steve Langendorf or myself. So, um, especially since one of my children will actually be there this year. So, uh, that should be fun. But, so we're looking forward to that, making that an annual event. And then on Friday, May 17, is our annual Bike to Work and School Day. So if you are able to, hopefully the weather will cooperate, although you can bike in any weather, as we learned from our bicycle spokesperson recipient. Um, just wear your helmet, please. So on to Parks and Rec stuff. I do want to remind people that resident registration for summer programs, uh, is underway. We give a two-week priority to our residents. And those are people living within the city limits, and that is because they pay property tax. Our programs are open to anyone, but we do give our residents a two-week window of priority. Um, non-residents may begin registering on May 13. The mayor alluded to National Employee Health and Fitness Day, which is, believe it or not, this Wednesday. And so I have flyers for you all. That will take place at City Park, as it usually does. Uh, the outer loop is still walkable. And drop in anytime between 11:00 and 1:00, and the city hopes to defend their trophy for the medium-sized business. So you all count as city employees, so please, please come out. Only a little competitive, but it's a great opportunity to get a mile in on your lunch break, and, uh, hopefully the weather will continue as beautiful as it did today. And speaking of City Park, but last but not least, I believe I emailed these out, but I can give you a hard copy. We do have the groundbreaking coming up for the new building. And that is on, uh, May 14, after I survive the assembly with the schools. We'll have that, right, Mayor? This year, I know, I know what's coming, so I won't have the heart attack when they jump over kids. It, it's all good. They're trained. We'll have the, uh, the groundbreaking at 1:30 out somewhere on the site. I am guessing it's going to be closer to the Martin Shelter, um, but just look for us. And, uh, I'm sure we'll get some of you involved on, in tossing some dirt. So that is all that I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions?
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Kristen. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
I wasn't sure where Colleen was going with her statement, but I'm glad it ended on a happy, happy. I don't get many, uh, I don't get many responses like that, although I do really appreciate hearing those, and I will make sure that the, uh, the crew and the staff that was on, on her site are aware that she was appreciative of their efforts. And like I said, I always, always like seeing those, hearing those messages and getting letters like that from our residents, because it does show that we are trying to make a positive impact with our residents and be sensitive to their properties and make sure that we're doing our, doing our job. So I will thank, uh, thank the guys for that. And then just to give an explanation about, uh, you know, we've had requested some expedited readings on Ordinance 8770 for tonight. Um, it's up for second reading. So we're trying to submit an application to the Ohio EPA for a construction loan agreement. I've got to get that application, uh, information to the EPA this week in order to have a, uh, a loan awarded in June. They want their, they want that information usually 30, 60 days in advance of the loan award. So ideally, the 1st of May is when they would have wanted that information, but they've kind of given us a little, little leeway here. So again, the request for that, uh, expedited readings was trying to meet the EPA's guidelines for getting a loan, loan application approved for a June timeframe, so the project could continue on as scheduled. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Brian. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Any question? Very good. Thank you. That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President, prior to this meeting, we had a meeting of the Community Improvement Committee discussing single-use bags. We concluded our business for that meeting, and we will have something to forward on to council as a whole.
Very good. Thank you. Mark, I'd just like to comment, number one, to, to thank you for the work that your committee did. Um, I thought the process was very thorough, provided ample opportunity for, um, uh, public participation and feedback. I did have a couple of observations. First of all, I thought that the document that you reviewed this evening, um, was very thorough, but I would just, I guess, caution that, um, certainly that would need, and I would think that once you complete your work on that document, we would forward that to the administration, so it could be sent for review by the law director, Mr. Marsh, to make sure that we're
Certainly none of us are attorneys.
Yes, I think
I did not expect that whatever we put together is what is going to be the final product.
Yeah, so once you get that back, we'll go ahead and we'll send that over to Mr. Marsh for review, just as a heads up that there could be some minor alterations necessary. And also, I was hoping that you would, uh, keep, keep an open mind and keep an eye out for a suggestion as to the, um, the organization and the function and duties of the, of the sustainability that you, that your committee discussed this evening. I, I have discussed this briefly with Ms. Tretter, and I don't want to speak for her, but, um, there, there are, um, I think Lori does have some thoughts on how we might want to structure this initially as a result of this piece of legislation. So again, I don't really want to speak for Lori, and I don't want to go into those details this evening, but I think at the appropriate time, I would just ask that you keep an open mind as it relates to how that committee is going to initially be structured.
You asked us for a recommendation and we're forwarding a recommendation.
Absolutely. Very good, and we do appreciate that.
A really good one.
It's a very good recommendation. Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President, I'd just like to give a reminder that, and this is really just to remind everybody that we are continuing to move forward on a lot of fronts. But the June 3, this is already on the schedule, but the Planning, Zoning, Economic Development Committee will meet at 6:00 p.m. on June 3, begin that process of, um, but very specifically, this initial meeting, review the implementation recommendations from the consultant dealing with Wushtree Street, and decide which of those implementation recommendations we want to recommend to the full council and at what priority. And what I would envision then is, is really a two-part process. Once we come back to council with a, with a recommendation to which implementation priorities or, and which implementation efforts and which priority, once council, the full council agrees on that, I think the committee would reconvene and start doing the hard work, make those implementation efforts happen. So I, I view a multi-part process. But it will begin on June 3.
Very good.
I think we're all looking forward, at 6:00. And we're all looking forward to starting to dig into those recommendations from Wushtree Street.
I definitely agree with that. I think we're all eager. Thank you, Greg.
One question on that, Greg. You presented us with some, uh, issues from the CAP several months ago. You did a nice job laying that out, and will that be kind of rolled together with this?
Well, where it makes sense to. I mean, I, I will, yes. We'll have that on the table at the committee meeting, and if there's overlap, we'll discuss. Just as an aside, uh, from that same committee, the, those list of CAP priorities, the only one that's really got some activity right now is on the bicycle side. And, and we'll be moving forward soon, well, under John's leadership of committee, uh, with the efforts of the Bicycle Safety Commission to bring forward specific recommendations on, to make some improvements there, which is one of the CAP implementation goal as well. So we've got a lot of things going on here, all at the same time. And I think it's important that we keep reminding ourselves that we are doing a lot. There's a lot happening here, both at the committee level. Moving forward, and I think over the next few months, we're going to see a lot, a lot of progress on a lot of fronts.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Zanfordino.
And, uh, thank you for mentioning the, um, Transportation and Safety Committee, Greg. The Bicycle Safety Commission has, uh, generated a really excellent report of, uh, of, uh, streets to consider for road treatments, sharrows, um, and/or bike lanes. Uh, and I forwarded that to President Osbacher and the administration. And, um, uh, we agreed our next step should be a meeting of the Transportation and Safety Committee to look at the Bicycle Safety Commission's report. I see June 3 is, has a meeting. I know, Greg, the 17th might be pushing it for yourself. So, um, it looks like we may, we'll try to schedule that for the first meeting in July if there's nothing else on the docket that evening.
I am not aware of anything, John.
Excellent. That's free?
What is that, what is that date, John?
Uh, that is, uh, July 1 is the Monday. And it'll be at 6:00 p.m. Jamie.
Very good. Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Very good. Thank you. Jamie, would you please lead us through the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 8771, ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Bowling Green for property generally known as 525 Ridge Street from B1 Limited Commercial to R5 University-related residential zoning. Ordinance number 8772 for first reading. Ordinance enacting and adopting the 2019 S-11 Supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8772 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Ordinance 8772.
Ordinance number 8772 for second and third reading. Ordinance enacting and adopting the 2019 S-11 Supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8772.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8772 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8773 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and engineering services related to a city administrative services building feasibility study. Ordinance number 8774 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system, TIPS, for proof, I'm sorry, for roof replacement at the water and sewer facility. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8768. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. Ordinance number
Mr. President? I, uh, move that we suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8768 its third reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
And Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8768 is adopted.
I suspended the rules.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 8768.
Ordinance Number 8768 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers?
I move we adopt Ordinance 8768.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
And Jeffers?
Yes.
Motion passes, Ordinance 8768 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8769 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 151.45D of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets and sidewalks. Ordinance Number 8770 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority for Water Pollution Control, loan fund funding for the design, equipment, and construction of the Aeration and Biosolids Improvement Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 8770 its third reading.
Second.
Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
And Robinette?
Yes.
Motion passes, rules are suspended for Ordinance 8770.
Ordinance Number 8770 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority for Water Pollution Control, loan fund funding for the design, equipment, and construction of the Aeration and Biosolids Improvement Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility and declaring an emergency.
I move to declare an emergency for Ordinance 8770.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes, Ordinance 8770 is adopted. Just comment, the reason for the expediting, expedited processing on this and the emergency clauses to allow for loan application deadlines. Please call the roll, Jamie.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
And Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion passes, Ordinance 8770 is adopted.
Legislation for third reading. Ordinance Number 8766. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement with the Manchester Group LLC for Utility Service Line Protection Program.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8766.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes, Ordinance 8766 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8767 for third reading. Ordinance accepting a utility easement from the Village of Haskins.